Thank you. We'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of Belavista City Council, January 27, 2025. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilmember Har.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Newport.
Here.
Wilmes.
Here.
Isbell.
Here.
And Hansel.
Here.
Here. Before we start citizen input, I'd like to welcome our new council members in Ward 1. We have Travis Har in Ward 2, Shay Newport, and in Ward 3, Anna Isbell. We also have a new seating arrangement where Ward 1 is at your left, Ward 2 is in the middle, and Ward 3 is on your right. That way it reads 1, 2, 3, just like you would read for the audience and hopefully get the residents to know the council a little better and who's in Ward and that sort of thing. So first, I am a citizen input. Per the rules, there's a three-minute per person time limit to address the council on any topic that that person's choosing. Total time allotted is 30 minutes. Any time extension beyond 30 minutes would be a discretion of council. We don't have that for new folks. So I'll read your name and address and I'm not completely speaking in the microphone, so it can be picked up by television. First one is Matthew Sanders from 7, Nim Twitch Circle. And welcome.
Mr. Mayor, councilwoman, gentlemen, thank you very much for your time. I don't have anything planned to say. I'm not a big speaker, so I'm just coming from the heart right now. My family moved here at the end of July from Alaska. We love the outdoors, the nice people that we have here, the clean community, the churches, everything. But there's an underlying problem right now with new construction builds. We have predatory builders that are allowed to do some really shoddy work for quantifiable numbers. My family bought a new construction house. We sold everything we had in Alaska to be able to invest into this community with a $515,000 house. Currently, six months later, we have over $100,000 worth of structural damages to our house. Our builder is not responsive to us. We have submitted many requests. I'm going to go from just a couple of notes that I made. We have framing issues. We have electrical issues. We have missing wall insulation. We have plumbing issues. Our yard has washed away and now robed, and we're on the edge of a cliff where Taylor Homestead is. These issues are not just my issues with my family. This has been, I've heard this many times from people in the Belavista area. In fact, today, recently, there was a judgment that happened for a lawsuit that happened for a reality TV show because there was a crappy builder in Belavista. So I am here begging you all to take action. I would love to see their, hold accountability to these builders so they could stop them from predatory building practices. A secondary effect of this is the fact that the home inspector from the city of Belavista, they failed. And that one person was in charge of framing, electrical, the wall insulation, plumbing, my yard. That one person, I was told by Chief Hudsonson, I think it was his name, who is no longer with us, who was in charge of the code, that that person was removed. However, while I was going through documents, that person has been put back on the desk and is now processing and inspecting homes again. This needs to stop. Just for further edification on how this predatory builder is disgusting. I brought all this things for you. We don't have a cliff deck that works on our stove. Our freestanding bathtub wasn't adhered to the floor, so the first time I went to go use it, flooded our downstairs all over. The list goes on and on. Our three-story deck is falling and failing, and it was, haven't even permitted through the city. How is that okay? But here's what this general contractor says. Every house on earth can be picked apart. Houses are built by imperfect people using imperfect material. Perfection does not exist. We strive to hire the best subs we can with the budgets we can afford as they competitive to stay in business. Everything you listed should have been caught by the inspector and real estate attorney you hired, and what's important to some is of no concern to others. If we didn't pick our subs up, they would quit working for us.
Thank you, Matthew. The next speaker is Larry Kelly of 12506 Collier.
Wow, I really hate to hear about Matthew's problem. But there's actually different ends of each of that spectrum. A lot of responsible builders don't have those problems, but I've heard those situations as well. That, in fact, I reviewed, actually watched online the planning commission for a variance waiver, and they had an issue similar to that that they were having to address with some setback problems. So I'm not opposed to inspectors or inspections. I think it's a good thing, and we need to make sure that we're doing it well. One of the things that I did want to speak to you about is on the agenda, item J, creating a fee for filing applications to the Board of Construction Appeals. This came to my attention that you were going to be talking about this. I just wanted to give some input and insight into that. I believe that that's part of, and I don't know your background conversations because I didn't have a chance to hear the work session, but I believe that in conjunction with adopting the 2021 Building Codes, that that was one of the requirements that we had to do was to set up a board or an appeal process. I know that because I'm on that board of appeals for Benton County. I'm actually the chairman of that appeals board. And so we set that up in conjunction with adopting the state's 2021 Building Codes. The thing that I saw there is you were considering placing a fee to have that appeal process done. And we don't charge a fee at Benton County, and I don't know of any municipality that does. I believe that a fee kind of stifles the ability for someone to go forward. I was visiting with someone just prior to the meeting saying, you know, I think a lot of people feel justified in taking someone to court sometimes, but they don't do so because of the cost of going to court. Okay, so I would just encourage you to consider not having a fee for that appeals process, but I think it would make people feel freer about using it. And then I was really curious about this item, and I don't know anything at all about it. And that's E, which was the Code Enforcement Officers of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Belavista to provide for development compliance officers defining their authority and for other purposes. So I'm really curious to hear the conversation on that. Code enforcement and citation abilities and things like that. Just really interested. That's the reason I'm here because I'm with the Board of Realtors. I'm a real estate broker. I'm concerned about everything affecting new construction and real estate and just pay particular interest to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next speaker is Marla Verena of Tarrington Circle in Belavista.
Well, I think you know why I'm here. I've done some more research on the situation with Goliath, just arbitrarily disregarding and everything about the aesthetics of our community and feeling like they have a right to destroy our road signs and our trees and our homeowners' properties. So I've made a few phone calls. I called Hot Springs Village, talked to their Public Works Director. They said they've never had anything like this down to their community, and they have lots of trees just like us. They're a community that was developed by Cooper, and they've never had their electric company do this to them. I called Eureka Springs, and they were shocked. They said, well, Carol is who provides our electricity, and they've never done that to any of our hilly wooded streets. I called the town of La Mel and spoke with Mike Hogan, who's their director of public works. And they're a fairly large town that is also wooded and hilly. He says they've never had a utility company do these kinds of things to them either. So it seems like we're kind of being picked on here. And I then called the state, and the lady at the state said, well, now there's the rule, and I think it got expanded at some point to the 30 feet that they're speaking of, 15 feet each side of the wire. And however they choose to do this is their right. And if you feel like they've overstepped what they're doing or what they're poisoning or whatever, we really don't see it that way because they have a right just to do whatever they want to within that 30 feet. And she said, you know, that's just the law, and that's the state, and you're just going to have to live with it. And I go, well, that's very interesting except they don't seem to do this to other towns. And I asked her about the cleanup, all the branches and all the debris that they leave on our streets. She says, oh, well, that's in the law too. That's the property owner's responsibility, not the power company. So all of this kind of bothers me. I don't think our state is looking out for our interests that they're going to let this go on, especially if it's not being done to everybody. And even across Belavista, the enforcement of this seems to be sporadic. Like, right on my street, which is a small circle, there's a tree coming down. Now, it's not my tree, it's a neighbor's tree. A block down, there's another circle. Then there's all kinds of trees right up against power lines, and they're not going to take any of those down. So where's the logic here? Even if this is legal, they are doing this in a very haphazard way. I think we all should be concerned. And the gentleman in the box that was before me, and I'm not a public speaker here, so I'm stuttering a little bit, and I apologize, but my informants concerned about real estate. Well, so am I. I bought into this 20 years ago, and our streets were beautiful. Our town was beautiful. We had foliage, we had greenery. We had a lush look to our town, and now it looks dead. And the lady at the state said that is okay with her if our town looks dead. So this is all okay with the state. It is okay with me, and I don't think our citizens should have been up with this. And I would be happy to tell you more because I talked with more people today than the bell is ringing.
Thank you, Marla. Appreciate it. Next speaker is Brian Cooper of 20 Claveton. I'm not sure what that last word is.
I don't know how to pronounce it. Cleveland, Cleveland Circle.
Yeah, Cleveland.
I'm a member of the neighborhood. We've been having a neighborhood problem. I'm not going to go into details of that problem because we don't have time. But it's been a criminal matter. The main concern of neighbors has been the last days of slow response from the authorities, but not going to go into detail about that. The main reason I'm here to represent our 15-home neighborhood, we'd like to thank our city council member Craig Honsel for coming out, listening to us, you know, at least twice, responding to our calls, our emails, and getting some stuff going. And that's the reason I'm here, is to give thanks to Craig and also to Anna for listening to, for getting my party for a little bit biased. But thank you. And we're still trying, it's still an ongoing issue. And I hope it continues to get discussed with the chiefs and et cetera so it can be quickly resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now at the time for council member reply. If anyone would like to say anything, wait in the ears.
Maddie, I am so sorry that you're experiencing this. This is like a nightmare. And I think it's a complex need to have with staff and to the department to see what we can do to make sure we're doing our part and make sure we're doing it to the fullest extent of our abilities. Again, I'm so sorry. Larry, thank you for being an active member of our community and coming by. I think that's the right response about the Benton County does there for. I didn't realize that. It's good to know, good information for us to have as we consider this later on. Marla, where you are. I agree. I hate the tree trimming they do it. I do know, just from my experience of living here for the six years or so, that they do do it in stages, I think, so they don't hit all areas of town at once. So that's probably why it seems like we're haphazard. And our area was done probably three years ago, and it hasn't been back since. But what they did are they did come back and clean up the debris then probably about a week, week and a half. So if that hasn't happened, Carol, I would kill her. But Carol should come back and clean up the debris. I can't have a conversation. I'm so sorry, we can't have a conversation. Afterwards, I'd love to talk to you more about this because I'm very passionate about making sure our green stays safe and green and safe for all of us. And then Brian, thank you for coming and talking about this situation happening in your neighborhood. I'm so glad that Craig and Anna have been a part of your work and have been able to step up and listen to you guys and make you feel heard. And I hope that gets resolved as quickly as possible for you guys. It does seem like a little bit of a nightmare situation, so I hope that gets resolved for you guys. Thank you all for coming out.
Craig?
I'll be brief. You know, to the neighborhood, Cleveland, we've been working on that for about a month. And, you know, this is one of those things where advocating for neighborhoods is a big deal. And I just hope that everybody in Belavista understands that that's one of our biggest purposes here is to make sure that you guys have voice.
Your mic has been on.
Oh, hear me now?
Yeah.
Matter? Got it. Okay. My apologies. I apologize. But like I was saying, you know, my involvement has been very minor just in comparison. They've been dealing with this thing since about April of last year, to my knowledge. You know, it's, hopefully, we're getting to a point where we get some clarification on a few things. And I'm excited moving forward. We're going to try to get a neighborhood meeting going and all that kind of stuff. So, and I'll be in touch. We have talked hours and hours, Michelle and I, and Brian, and all the neighbors. But it's been great meeting everybody. Everybody's been really good sport about the whole process. Marla, I know you and I have been talking for the past couple of weeks. We had the mayor and I and Cassie sat in with Carol Electric. So we have information, and we're definitely not even really scratching service, but we do have a starting point at this point. I feel pretty comfortable and confident that we can form a partnership and kind of some kind of conclusion with this. I'm hopeful anyway. And man, Matthew, that's a tough road to hoe. I've been in your shoes. If you need my help with anything, you know, my door is always open. I'm on the website. So with that, I'll turn it over to anyone who likes to.
Larry Wilmes?
I guess a couple of thoughts. Mr. Sanders, I really feel bad about your situation. I'm not sure I can understand it. The reality is that most of the certified and licensed inspectors are to follow a state code in terms of standards of construction, materials used, all the rest of it. So in the process, as I understand, our department, much like Centerton, Bentonville, Rogers, they all use the same book. It's Volume 2 and Volume 3 of the Arkansas Fire Protection Code that deals with building construction itself. They also overlap dealing with fire protection in those buildings. The reality is, is that it tells the inspector and the contractor how the building is to be put together, how the wiring is to be done, how their terminations are to be done. So I'm confused as to how you might have ended up with the problems you have, and I really feel bad about that. I'd like to learn more. But to my understanding, there's a plateau here that below which doesn't get approved, above which is approved. That's the standard that the state requires. Mr. Kelly, the construction appeal thing, that's for an appeal by a contractor of a decision made by a building inspector. So tell them, if the building inspector says you've got to have five nails of that Joyce and the contractor says no, it only deserves three, he can appeal that decision and then the appeals board. So I understand your sympathy about the fee. I'm ambivalent about what we're proposing on that issue. Ms. Marla, Carol Electric, when I moved here in '05, I've experienced two ice storms in Belavista, one in '07, which was we were in the southern fringe going north. And in '09, we were the northern fringe going south. And so we saw, Belavista saw a serious amount of damage because of tree falling, taking power lines down. A couple of weeks ago, in fact, about a month ago, in my neighborhood, I was sitting at home about 9 o'clock at night, and all of a sudden I heard something crash outside, and my lights went out. So I went outside and said, well, everybody else's lights are out in my street as well. So I called Electric on the inside, they got power outage. They come out and found a tree on the lot, two doors down from me on the other side of the street that had fallen, tall tree had fallen, and they took the power line down. So those are things that, that particular tree probably would not have been affected by Carol. But what they're trying to do is create a corridor along their power line system to mitigate and minimize the potential of being down if we have another bad ice storm. That's what my understanding is. I think they do a survey before their annual meeting in May, and that survey has been overwhelming of about 97% customers support them doing that work of cleaning the corridor along the power lines for tree removal. So the methodology that they use, that's not a part of the question. So, and Mr. Cooper, I don't have any knowledge about your situation, but I'm sure that Mr. Honsel will follow up with you and cover that. Thank you.
Anybody else? I'd just like to thank everybody for speaking, telling us about their problems because it does help us to run the city better and solve problems when we know about these situations. So appreciate you're willing to come forward. The next item on the agenda is action on the minutes, approval of the minutes from the December 16, 2024 regular meeting. Move to the board. A second. That was Mr. Wilmes and Mr. Har. Roll call.
Councilmember Har.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
Newport.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Isbell.
Yes.
And Hansel.
Yes.
Motion carries to zero. Next item is the monthly financial report. This is for the year-to-date period in November 30, 2024. So it's 11 months of the year. I'd like to focus on a few things. The city sales tax was up 7.9% in 2024 versus prior year, which is really excellent because most cities in Arkansas are pretty much flat this year. The county sales tax is up 1.4%, which actually is an improvement from what it was earlier in the year. So they had a little bit of an increase. That operating revenue total is up 1.8% compared to last year. So that's quite modest compared to what we used to see in the last few years. And that total operating expenditures, we are $1.2 million below budget. So the revenue is above our budget, and the expenditures are below. So our financial situation continues to be good. County income has been much more modest than usual, but outside of that, we continue to be in good shape. So we'll see how the last month shows up, but I'm confident we're going to have another year with pretty good results. Next item is 2024 Planning and Development Highlights. Director Taylor Robertson. She gave a very interesting report at the work session. We felt we should have it again at the live meetings since more people tend to view that. Taylor?
Okay, I have uploaded the report onto the website of CivicQuirp, so everyone should be able to access this. Everyone is attending. But I will go ahead and summarize it for you. The highlights, as it says, of 2024, starting with our issued permits. We had a 65% increase in issued permits of grading and erosion control, which those are sites for the audience. That's site-specific land clearing permits. Essentially, that's where they get a permit to clear the lot before they give a billing permit, and they also tell us how they're going to grade, cut, alter the land and whatnot. So we had a 65% increase in issued permits between 2024 and 2023 with a total of around 910 issued GECs. So that's 910 different building sites. They're all individual site-specific. And then we go to our residential single-family home building permits. We have a 29% increase at just over 600. I think it was around 640 compared to right under 500 for 2023. Miscellaneous building permits, we have a negative 9 increase or a 9% decrease. Miscellaneous building permits, we had a negative nine increase or a 89% decrease. We were just shy of around 850 compared to around 920 for 2023. Commercial was up 75%, around 50 commercial building permits, I believe. And looking at the five-year comparison with issued permits, GECs, we were up 142% in 2024 compared to 2020, or 2019. We were around 380 in 2019, and as I said, we issued 910 in 2024. Residential building permits, we were up 129%. Miscellaneous building permits, we were up 70% compared to 2019. And then commercial, it's really misleading, but it's 444% increase just due to the amount. It was so small. In 2019, I think we only had like four. We'll get to that in here in a few of the exact permit numbers. Planning reviews, everything your planning staff and your planning commission reviews and approves. Development, large-scale developments, condition-reused permits, things of that nature, waiver requests. 2023, we only had 248 total. In 2024, we had 327, giving us a 32% increase in one year. Then we looked at the five-year increase for planning reviews. We had 146% increase. So just looking at reviews between GECs, residential, commercial, and planning, all were up over a 100% increase over the last five years. In 2019, we only had 133 of planning reviews versus that 327 in 2024. And those are all issued permits, which is essentially where a lot of the data, if you have people to call around and ask for data, that's what they use to gauge like future resident counts, population counts increases, things like that, to read that in the dwelling units, so they can figure how many they think will happen the next year or two, depending on our average family size. In Bentonville, it's sitting around two and a half. So if you take those dwelling units, tie that up at two and a half, population growth is what's expected. But those are seemingly the numbers that the majority of like media and items like that, I'm too concerned about. But another item that I wanted to bring everyone's attention is just submitted applications, and that's where we talked a lot. The work session was the submitted applications. That includes those that were issued and those that may have not been issued, but it's still an application that we spent staff resources on, reviewing and taking, processing, putting in the system, sending review comments on. We just haven't issued yet. Those numbers are obviously, give you a little bit more better deal, just the workload that staff has, because even though we have issued it, we've probably still spent a significant amount of time on that application. So just to give you an idea of workload, your received and submitted applications are important to review. Quickly looking at those numbers, submitted grading and erosion control applications, we only had 888 in 2024. So we issued 910 in 2024. We received 888. So that means we issued quite a few from 2020 through the year before, probably in January, early, early, just to explain that difference. So we had 888 received versus 622 in 2023, giving us a 43% increase. And then with a five-year difference, we had 123 increase, because we only received 399 in 2019. But again, 888 in 2024 gives us that 123 increase. Looking at single-family home applications, we received 810 applications in 2024 for single-family houses, compared to only 541 in 2023. And then that 810 compared to 2019, we only had 293. That's a 176% increase in single-family home applications over a five-year lapse. Just to give those exact stats, those were graphic data that's presented to give you those percentage increases. Again, just quickly reviewing 2024, just applications we've received. Planning reviews, through planning commission, 327. Planning reviews and applications that we issued permits on, such as short-term goals. On top of that, it's 780 for 2024. Engineering applications, those GECs, 888. Residential building applications, 810. Commercial building applications, 46. Miscellaneous building applications, 959. Subcontractors or MEPs, 670, giving us a total grand number of 4,189 applications we received in 2024. And then quickly again, just heading on, an increase over five years, just since I've been here the last five years. Reviews, planning reviews have increased 146%. Engineering, 123. Residential, 176. Commercial, 444. Again, nine versus 46, just to put it in per view, but miscellaneous. So again, just kind of recapping on just the permits that we've issued. 142% increase in GECs in the last five years, 129% increase in residential building permits, 444% increase in my commercial building permit, that's 70% increase in miscellaneous building permit. So all of these, I just keep saying increase, 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 just to really drive home, the work is increasing and it's exponentially increasing, nothing slowed down. Miscellaneous is the only thing that's saw a small dip from 2023 to 2024. However, from 2019 to 2024, we still saw a substantial increase. I'm not sure if the miscellaneous building permit was a situation attributed to lake drawbacks versus 2023, because we had quite a few lake drawbacks that had a lot of dead permits in 2023. But I haven't quite analyzed or got that deep into that. And then we also talked infrastructure, because I love talking about subject systems and sewer and infrastructure, utility water, all that. So just a few quick updates on that where we're sitting. According to Benton County, ADH, known issued subject permits or existing subjects in the city limits of Elvista. We are now at 13,708 known subject systems under city limits. That is more than any other city or Benton County unincorporated in our county. Benton County comes in second, which I'll give you their stats in a few. Known residential units on village wastewater are sitting around 3,703. And so out of the 2024 residential building applications that we got, the 810 number I gave earlier, only 89 of those, or 11% of the applications, were designated as sewer lots. So that is, you know, roughly around 700 more subject systems that we got in our city limits in 2024. Versus in 2019, 29% of our building applications were on sewer. So 11% in 2024 versus 29% in 2019. Currently, Belavista makes up 48% of the entire county for subject permits, totally. For total count, there's 28,801 known subject permits slash systems in Benton County. Again, we are 13,708 of those. And water infrastructure, we are currently sitting around 16,589. That includes both residential and commercial. Looking at subject systems, just to give you an idea, Benton County comes in second at 10,116. So we are over 3,000, or 2,000 more, oh, sorry, 3,000 more than Benton County unincorporated around the entire county. Other than that, it's us. So we have 13,708 in Elvista, 10,116 in Benton County. And the next closest or third place is gonna be Rogers, actually, with 1,109. So quite the difference in amount of subject system. And I have the map uploaded. I'm gonna be updating our city website as well. We keep a subject system report on our planning page. The report of the actual most updated map is on this report that's uploaded for you all of you. We'll be swapping that out as well. And then looking at some partnerships with the planning commission and planning staff and city councils, some ordinances we all may impossible, where the retaining all terracing requirements, flood prevention updates for state compliance, for in six rezones, we had our first outdoor lighting ordinance, driveway grade update and zoning notification update, as well as the temporary grass working permit. Regional impression for 2024, Belavista was highlighted at the American Planning Association Quad State Conference in three separate presentations. So that was essentially a conference that happens every year between planners, however, every four years, every three to four years, all four states get together and have a massive conference. And Belavista, for the first time, I know that was on three of those segments that we had. One of them was not even from city staff, it was actually from another city. So pretty cool to see a lot of needed recognition for the awesome things, both planning and development-wise, that are happening in Belavista. Grants and awards, Belavista was awarded an $81,000 grant for active transportation, education, and awareness that is aligned with our new bike and ped plan. We will get that money to utilize here in 2025. Development code reform as well, just to keep on everyone's, you know, the sideburners, or just a reminder that on top of all this current planning that we've been doing, a record year of received applications, we've also been rewriting chapters 107 and 109 with the goal to get it in front of planning commission this spring, I'm hoping in March. But we have spent the year of 2024 writing from scratch, chapter 107, 109, as well as working on the zoning map to bring forward to you guys this spring. And so we're hoping to start getting some dates put together for public input sessions before we move to formal public hearings with the planning commission, of course, before you all. And with that, I just wanted to mention some other things our department handles currently. We oversee several different boards in our department, that including planning commission board of zoning adjustment, active transportation advisory board, tree advisory board. Of course, we attend these four items that require our presentation to you all. Through those boards, we've hosted some special events, my favorite being the Arbor Day celebration. And we did a month-long celebration in 2024 where we had a sticker contest with Cooper Elementary. We had a tree identification hike with some master naturalists and master gardeners. We partnered with them to plant a tree at the New Ruden parking, trailhead parking along the, hopefully, the future greenway site. We did approve a development plan or reissue one in 2024 to lengthen that project, to lengthen the greenway from Percy Way to Ruden. We also had the spring tree giveaway, which is more known. The fall tree giveaway is pretty popular as well. And then we had eight large trails meant through our city trails. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Larry?
I also have a question. Do you know offhand how many lots have houses on them?
Uh, in like how many current dwelling units we have?
Yeah.
I would have to estimate around 16,500, just based off of our water tap counts. And that's again an estimate, because we do have some businesses and dwelling units that still have wells.
No wells?
Yeah, so we still have some wells existing in the city almost, but I would estimate around 16,500 here in front of you right now, without a lasso.
The reason that I ask that is that I moved here in 2005. It was a banner year for the Belavista POA, because they issued building permits during that timeframe. And they issued just shy of 1,000 building permits in Belavista that year. It was a blue year in northwest Arkansas. At that time, we had about 38,000 lots created in the city. Those were lots developed by the developer when he bought the land, pre-city incorporation. So it was all done in the county. All of the approvals were done in the county. All the oversight of construction was done by the county, if there was any. All building construction theoretically was done to the same standard that we have today on the version of the Fire Protection Code back then. So it was the building code in place. The point that I'm coming to is, is that at that time, 30% of our lots, 30% of our lots had houses on them. Today, we have 43% roughly of the lots have houses on them. Many of those houses own more than one lot, maybe two, maybe three, that they may have an ancillary structure on. It may be for a seepage bed for their, their septic system failure. There may be any number of reasons. They may just own a bunch of lots next to them. It's reported that someone owns probably over several hundred lots in Belavista for development purposes. That's a rumor, not confirmed by me. So Belavista is growing substantially. The Bentonville-Centerton area was registered number five on the national scale of growth in the last several years. And I think they're still, still are certainly up in that near category. So we're feeling those growing pains as well. Belavista has been known because of the values in housing, especially for families. And so we're a real draw in that area, which is a demand on all of our staff, a demand on the builders, and has resulted in some perhaps issues that were identified earlier tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor. Really appreciate all your hard work and your staff. It's been a tremendously hardworking staff the last few years. The next subject is election of mayor pro tempore. And before we start out, Jason, you might want to say a few words.
This is a special sort of vote that you take once a year pursuant to Rule 9B of your rules, and I'll just quickly read that to you. The city council shall at the time of organizing a public session, elect one of its members as mayor pro tempore. Any council member may nominate himself or any other member of the city council for mayor pro tempore, and no second of the nomination is required. Each council member shall vote by naming his choice by voice vote, if there is more than one nominee for a position. A majority vote of the city council shall be required for election. In the absence of the mayor, the mayor pro tempore shall provide, shall preside of the city council. So round of nominations with no second are required, and if we have more than one nomination, we'll have a vote.
Okay, Larry?
I would nominate Wendy Hughes to that position for our consideration.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Anna?
I'd like to nominate Wendy Hughes to that position. Is it appropriate to say the reason for it, or do we just?
Don't have to.
Don't have to.
There could be a period of debate here for all nominations.
Oh, okay, yeah. Anyone else? Okay, you can go ahead, Anna, if you'd like to say something.
So part of the reason that I nominated Wendy is I've watched her on the council for the last two plus years. She serves on the AMP commission, she serves on the street committee, she's attended Caldo City events. You see, if you follow her on social media, whether it's Fourth of July currying. She's also the parent teacher organization president at Cooper Elementary. So she's just proven herself to be very dedicated to the city of Belavista and to its residents. She's also on the board of two other organizations, including the library. And so Wendy is very active in listening and seeking feedback from the public, and she's always looking to make things better and find solutions. And so I think that she's just been a great representative for the city. Thank you.
May I speak for myself?
Sure, go ahead.
On that note, I really hope the consideration, I should have said this in the work session. I, I think we need to kind of advocate on the last, on the planet, that I would sit here and tell you how great I am. That is not me. This makes me nervous even saying this out loud. The time that I've spent community involvement, I have over 10 years planning commissioner experience in Fayetteville and between Fayetteville and Belavista before getting elected two years ago. You know, this for me would be just more of a personal milestone and a huge honor for me. I did, in fact, work with Taylor in creating the outdoor lighting ordinance. I sponsored the tree ordinance and the underground utility ordinance. I'm currently the director of the youth council for the city. I'm on the board of directors for the Belavista Association. You know, the, the working relationships that I have with city staff, I think, are fantastic. I have conversations with mayor often. I'm sure I drive Chief Graves and Chief Sims nuts. So, but anyway, yeah, I'm not gonna go on and on. But I'd certainly appreciate some consideration. I really hope this is not a knee-jerk reaction and just really give a little bit of consideration. Thanks.
Anybody else in this debate? Travis?
I think they're both great nominees. I would nominate everyone on this panel if I could, so I appreciate both of you for your hard work and congratulations on your nomination.
Are we ready for a roll call vote?
The roll call is just a vote on showworkies. It's all ready, it's all rolling.
Councilmembers, whoops, councilmembers Hart?
Hughes.
Hughes, Hughes. Newport, Hughes. Wills?
Hansel.
Isbell, Hughes. Hansel?
Hansel.
Four for Hughes and two for Hansel.
Yes, Wendy Hughes is elected mayor pro tempore. Congratulations. Four to two vote. Congratulations, four to two vote. Next item is, I'd like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules of order procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only.
So.
Second.
This is second. Okay, that was Mr. Wilms and Ms. Newport. Roll call vote.
Councilmember's heart?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
Uh, oops, Hatchell?
Yes.
A motion carrying six to zero. Uh, there's no unfinished business under new business. First matter is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belvista to increase procurement authority without soliciting competitive bids from thirty-five thousand dollars to forty-two thousand nine hundred twenty-one to conform with state law changes, providing for indexing set amounts to inflation, amending sections for purposes of conformity therewith and for other purposes. So as you know, this is a change in state law. Uh, it has provided every five years they will adjust the amount for inflation. And so this is our local proposal. Is there any discussion? Travis?
Uh, I would just encourage everyone that's spending the taxpayer's money, if we do without pay, to keep it within the state or as local as possible.
Thank you. Anybody else? Larry?
I guess. What it does is it allows us to, uh, avoid spending money to package a project up and formally bid it. That requires advertisement in the paper, requires a lot of staff time to do that extra work to formalize it. Whereas if we don't need to formally bid it by state law, which we're proposing to follow with this passage, uh, it means we can do it informally. The process and the procedure are still done. Quotes, you know, bids are still taken. But it's not the formal process, which requires a lot of paperwork and other documents, including advertising and publication, so. It's important.
Anybody else? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Mayor?
Mayor?
This is an ordinance, so this is first reading.
Right, oh, that's right, yeah, this is just first reading. Okay. So unless you want to go to the third final, you can move on to the next one. Okay, next one is an ordinance amending section two dash one four of code enforcement officers of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Belvista to provide for development compliance officers to find their authority and for other purposes. Did you want Taylor to?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Taylor.
Okay, just a quick overview of this proposal. Essentially, it is reestablishing authority to cite back to our department as well as share it with the police department. The traditional code enforcement, the intent of this is so that code enforcement can focus on your traditional code enforcement situations like tall grass, um, maybe the trash cans been left out by the side of the curb for too long, things that are visible from these streets such as trailers, RVs, been parked out there too long, et cetera. And then development-related, uh, issues would be handled by our department from the beginning all the way to the end versus right now. We are handling the beginning, the middle, kind of the end, and then we refer to code enforcement. And in some situations, it may be referred back to us, and we may refer it back to them just depending on what the situation is, or we could just handle from beginning and like we used to prior to June 2023. Uh, so that is the intent of this, is basically to streamline enforcement for anything development or permit-related or anything that our department oversees, which currently right now per the ordinance is hazardous trees and illicit stormwater discharge, as well as driveway improvements, short terminals, section 105, which is floodplain, section 107, which is development standards, and then 109, which is zoning. Um, typically, or like right now how we're operating, we do have a development compliance officer that is operating at a notice of violation, uh, I guess, as you would say, as far as his enforcement goes. Uh, and that's kind of how it was before. Most of the time, I have to attend, all it takes is a notice of violation and then compliance is achieved. Citation is very rare. Back when it was in our department, I believe total since its existence of the department of planning and code enforcement, um, to the time that it went to police department, I think we only issued seven citations total. Um, it's not supposed to be used as a quick and easy handout. It's something that, you know, is there to give the ordinance enforcement to you should we need it. Um, but we do have a development compliance officer that has already been issuing notice of violations for these chapters that I've discussed already. Uh, I think since we last talked, uh, there's already been several others issued. I think I gave around a hundred fifty from the report I wrote for the work session. However, I think as of today, he gave me a quick update, we're sitting around two hundred. He's already closed, since he was, he's taken this role, I think, around since December 13th, and he's already closed out around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty of those. So just their notice of violations, just notifying someone that what they're doing isn't following our development. So again, it's just to get it back to kind of where we were and help streamline the process of development, permit enforcement, and other items I mentioned that we currently oversee. And Chief Graves also, um, he did offer to add anything if he wanted from his point of view as well. Happy to take any questions.
Any comments or, uh, Travis?
Yeah, it seems to me that the more appropriate thing for, for your department is to not issue permits or revoke the permits or withhold the certificate of occupancy or, uh, you know, send it over to code enforcement. If it's not a, uh, if it's a rare issue, I, I can't see the code enforcement officers being so inundated with work that they can't handle these rare occasions of when they need fines. Um, I've been in emergency services long enough that I think that a police department would want to get this off their plate if they're not, you know, if these fines wouldn't hold it in court, so to speak, you know. So that's something that I, I've talked to several of the local police chiefs in the area, why they might not like this. But I've also talked to, I reached out to seven different cities in our area, and five of them got back to me and told me that their planning department does not issue citations. Um, I'm, I'm really trying to understand this from your frame of reference, but I'm struggling right now, so, but I am trying, so I just want you to know that. But can you give us an example of the time where withholding the certificate of occupancy or, you know, revoking the permit or issuing a cease and desist order would not be appropriate?
So for example, if it's a land use violation, it would be no permit to withhold or C of O to withhold from them. That's just an NOB, and then hopefully they comply. Uh, then a citation and a cease and desist if that doesn't continue. Another item where a permit would not be required is illicit discharge. I would not have a permit to hold over for enforcement or C of O. Uh, if someone's dumping oil or something of that nature into our drainage ditch, or maybe they've got a, a little mobile business where they groom dogs and they're putting dog waste in the ditch, that's not something I can issue a permit and hold on. If it's something where I need to cite in that situation, that's something that needs brought in with compliance immediately, where that would be a compliance situation that's currently tasked to me to enforce. And just to allude to that a little bit, uh, there are these sections of, this is again a streamlining attempt is all it is. Now, I have sections of code that say, you know, Taylor, you as the planning director are supposed to enforce these sections of code. But this now, this ordinance that we're discussing tonight doesn't really align with those other several sections of code because it says, well, actually only the police department has the authority. So I am given the task of enforcing chapter 109, however, I cannot cite for 109. So it's really just to kind of help get that streamlined and kind of speak to each other a little bit and to really clear any confusion as to what I can do. Yes, I am required to enforce it, but how can I enforce it without citation authority? Um, another one would be septic, failing septic, which is two sections of code. Again, there's no permit that I can use. It's again, just, we need to get that fixed, it's a public health safety concern. Uh, the code says it's my job as the planning or now planning and development director to enforce that, but I can't, like, I don't have the tool to do it other than that method. Um, my.
No, I mean, just, just, I support this. And one of the things when code enforcement came over to the PD, one of the, one of the little, I'm sorry, one of the things when code enforcement came to the PD, one of the little hurdles we had was a lot of the things that we were talking about is the investigations they do with these ordinance-type violations with zoning and the things you're talking about. Um, you know, if they get to the point where they have to cite, then they call code enforcement that works for me now. It's not that we can't do it, but now there's duplication of effort because whoever writes the citation has to be the one that's, that's ready to go to court months down the road or whenever and testify to everything from A to Z. Uh, let's, the most extreme situation would be, let's say, um, somebody, her department did the entire investigation. Uh, they said, hey, can you write a citation? And we do, we write a citation. And then months down the road, we go to court, but whoever in her department maybe went to get a job somewhere else and doesn't work there anymore. And now we have to testify to something that we maybe don't have the full documentation for, which we can do the documentation, it's just, it's not a very efficient way to do it. So what we're doing is when they, we were trying to do this, they would be doing the investigation. We'd ask you all the paperwork. It wouldn't lead our standards because the PD has different standards. It wasn't that their standard was wrong, it's just we're using different systems. Uh, and it just wasn't efficient. We're wasting a lot of time going back and forth for something simple like this. Uh, I don't see a problem. I think this is much more efficient. It's not that we don't have the time to do it or can't do it, there's plenty to do. But, but this is just a more efficient way to do it quicker and keep it cleaner. So down the road, if we go to court to testify, we're not missing anything. It, it's as simple as that.
I would add on that too, just, I know he's kind of addressing the backend. If it does, and then, you know, unlikely that it gets a citation, it goes to court. Just in the investigation period and up to the point of citation, our staff is more trained in the development ordinance than the code enforcement is. So it helps even the conversation that's happening out on the field or when contact is being made, be able to explain what codes are being broken, why they're being broken, and what, you know, in that situation, it helps from that as well. Just like his code enforcement officers are going to be more in tune to talk about other sections of code, like section eighteen, unsanitary, unsightly conditions. Um, so that's what they're trained to do versus our staff is trained to handle building code violations, zoning code violations, development code violations, et cetera. Um, so yeah.
Also, does the chief building official have authority to issue citations?
Currently, right now, only the police department, based on this ordinance, has the authority to write citations.
Mr. Mayor?
I just had a quick, when Travis, you said you spoke to seven police chiefs?
Uh, no, I saw, reached out to seven cities.
Seven cities?
Yes. And asked them if they did this, if their planning department did. And I believe five of them told them no.
I misunderstood, I didn't know if you had a conversation with Chief Graves.
No, and, and two of the cities have heard back from them, so I don't know if they do or not.
Okay, that's all.
For the record, I tried it the other way for a year, and I kept saying, come on, you can do this, you can work together better. And I finally gave up, and we're not adding a person. The police had four people, and now they have three. So this DCO is not even an additional person. Now, I told the police, if you get too busy, then we'll consider it. And another one, but we're taking some of this, some of the work out of physical people. Wendy?
So we know that this is a very unique city in so many different ways. Um, we have the ACC, we have the city, we have the POA. In other cities, yeah, what precedent do we have? What would they do? Uh, this seems like maybe code enforcement. I don't know why we moved them over to the PD if we're bringing it, or bringing it back.
Well, I, I think when the mayor asked me to take over code enforcement, you know, happen or where it was, I think it was a good idea. I thought, I thought it belonged better under the PD because what's happening then is all the other things that had been enforced, like the, the boats and the garbage cans and all the, all the other unsightly.
Parking.
Parking, thank you. It had been enforced, so what happened is, is code enforcement would go out there a lot of times. Um, this isn't to speak ill of any code enforcement at the time, and they weren't properly trained, they had a hard time meeting people, confronting people. And so just the enforcement, when, they would call the police all the time to come with them to go do enforcement, is what I'm saying. So, so we had to do a lot of the enforcement anyways, to be involved in the enforcement. So I thought, oh, let's take it over. We'll, we'll train the code enforcement officers on the way, the way we enforce things on the PD way, which seems to work. And it worked very efficiently. The one, the one area that didn't work well was with, in, with the areas that we really, it wasn't our wheelhouse, like the zoning stuff and the stuff Taylor's talking about. That's not our wheelhouse. My guys aren't trained to do that. We don't want them to be because that's not, that's not what they do. But then when it came time to enforce that, then they were calling us to come enforce it for them or write the ticket for them. It was just clunky. And it's not that we can't work well together, it's just clunky. We have two different systems we use. We have to use our CAD system, we just have to use it for stats to keep things. They use a different system, they just didn't mesh well together, and it just wasn't an efficient way to do it. And so there was a lot, there was a lot of headaches, not because we don't work well together, we work great together, but we couldn't make that work well. And so I think this is a perfect fix. I don't see a big deal about this. Um, it, it's just going to be more efficient. This person is going to be focusing on the stuff Taylor needs him to focus on. They're not going to go out and write ordinances for anything else. She has specific things that she's drilled down between her apartment and mine and said, we'll enforce this, we'll enforce this by lieutenant who's in charge of writing my code enforcement. He's really happy with it. Uh, he, he likes the way it was broken down. We have no problem with it. So I'm, I'm in full support of this and think it should be passed in my opinion.
May I do a quick follow-up question?
Sure, Wendy.
You mentioned training for the code enforcement officers to get them under, so they should have properly just citations. Is there a plan to do that with the planning department officer?
Well, if, if, yeah, if this is approved, a fully planned, um, for our training, yeah.
Yep, my lieutenant, Lieutenant Panetta, will work with, with Taylor. He works with her now anyways. And if, if they want to come over, we can give them a good method of how to do this enforcement, how to, how to deal with people, how to not be confrontational and, and just sort of make things work properly. Uh, we can do that. Somebody had mentioned in a letter, I think, that you got referenced, um, are they going to be trained in de-escalation and things like that? Usually, if, if we think there's going to be some sort of threat of violence or escalation or anything like that, city officials, different city departments will call the police to go with them anyway. And so police officers will be involved if we think there's going to be some sort of confrontation, not code officers.
Okay.
Um, we did have a question, I just want to make sure it didn't get set aside. Uh, another city that has a similar setup?
Yes.
So I believe Little Rock has zoning enforcement officers, and then they have code enforcement officers. So this would be almost pretty close to that setup. So the zoning, except they specifically only handle the zoning chapters. Uh, this person's role would handle development, Anthony.
Mayor?
Anna?
Um, one other question. So will it just be the one code enforcement officer for planning that would have the ability to write citations? Or would there be other additional people within your firm that would have the ability to write the citations? Or will it be those that are trained properly through Chief Graves' team?
So as the ordinance stands, it designates me and then my designee. So that would be just very literally speaking, myself and then the development compliance officer is who I would designate, should this ordinance be approved. And yes, if it's approved, training will commence, so.
Travis?
Yeah, and the example that you, you gave, the dog, someone has a home business doing, you know, dog washing or whatever. Well, I'm, I'm more inclined to support small businesses, and I would, I'd be advocating to educate them on the proper steps and, as opposed to issuing them a citation. Uh, but also in any of those examples, uh, it still seems like you could issue a cease and desist order, and if invited by that, you could get law enforcement involved. Am I, am I understanding that correctly, or am I wrong about that?
I would prefer that the term of the cease and desist would be appropriate for an illicit discharge. Uh, that gets involved with like state requirements and things like that. When you're discharging into the MS4 system, that's a day of infraction. Uh, but when you're talking about home businesses and land use, yes, a cease and desist would be after a citation is issued, depending on the severity of the land use violation, that'd be totally different. But yes, to answer your very first statement, education's always number one. Actually, your city planners and the staff that's going to be in my department are, that's actually what we spend a large majority of our time is educating. Um, so a lot of people don't understand what planning and zoning is. They don't understand what our development code is. People do understand that we have laws for like parking. Uh, but when you start getting the land use, no, you can't step back, so you can't have things within that. That is a huge primary role of us, is to educate first before moving on any further. Um, and so that's a sole, you know, that's one of my firm's ethical standpoints of education over everything. And that does take place, as I said, notice of violations. Uh, that's kind of the point, to open up the door for education, and that's when we bring them in, explain to them how they're breaking the code, why they can't do it, things like that. It's not ever immediate, just random citation, mail, or anything like that. But that's not even remotely in my expectation of what we would do if this ordinance were changed.
Anna?
Let me just have a question on that point. What is the, what would be the normal process then? Is it a citation in the mail or is it a conversation first at that person's residence or?
So if someone is violating the local ordinance that is within the development code, the situation would be a notice of violation or plenty of contact. We would explain to them what codes are being violated, why they can't, why they can't. It's always the first step. Again, it's educating. Typically, a timeframe is given for compliance. And then if that timeframe isn't followed or they're refusing to follow up, perhaps there's one last follow-up and if they're still refusing to follow up, then that's whenever a citation may be mailed, registered by mail or in person. However, it's very rare to ever get to that. It's typically during the conversation and the explanation. It may take us a week or two or maybe three weeks, but typically during that, that's where we want to get compliance.
And then having a lot of elderly folks in Val Vista, is there a next step if they're unable to maybe get to where we need them to be in terms of a step in the process where we could? Like, is there a formal process to maybe assist further? For those that are, this might as should be more around some of the other ordinance or code violations.
2024, for example, talking about issuing citations, we don't issue a lot of code enforcement citations. We, I think 2024, off the top of my head, I think it was down a couple of code officers most a year. We did about 1,100 contacts or 1,100 violations. We had 90% compliance. That means we didn't issue citations 90% of the time. And although we issued, if we can, we try to issue them in person. I don't like mailing things, just like Taylor said. I think that's kind of rude unless you just can't get ahold of somebody that you certify mail. We try to be face to face. But that's how we train our officers, same way. And that's how we help Taylor with hers. That sounds like she's in the same boat. We want to educate people. We want to gain compliance. Most people want to comply. They, a lot of the times, they don't know they're on violation. They don't know it's a problem. What was the second part of your question?
It was really just about how you resolve situations.
Oh, yeah. We did have, we did have several. There's no formal organization to help elderly clean up their house or to cut their lawn. But we have had some situations, as I already called the passion off the top of my head, where we did find some neighbors and some help to help get somebody's lawn. I think their husband went to the hospital. Nobody's already cut their lawn. So we worked with them to give them time to get everything cut and didn't give a ticket for their tall grass. So no, we absolutely do that sort of stuff. And I imagine Taylor would do the same thing. There's no formal organization to do that, but we do have contacts in the community to help get things done when we need to. Really, the citation's the last, that's the last place we go with everything, honestly.
If I may interject, many mayors are reluctant to put code enforcement under police because they think it's too mean or it looks too mean. And since Chief Graves, who I think's done a great job on code enforcement, we've had more criticism of being too nice than being too mean. And that's what he's talking about, where they try, he believes in getting people to comply. It's not a contest. I say with people you can cite and find. And so it's starting to always start to be kind of ironic that, you know, people think it's too mean to put it under police. It's not necessarily. It's how you handle it. I have one other thought that I have to say. I have a management style of trying to get good people and then giving them space to do their job. Not micromanaging, just the opposite of micromanaging. The police chief knows more about police work than I do. The fire chief knows more about fire than I do. Taylor knows more about planning than I do, not only right now, but there's zero chance I will catch up to any of them ever. So no matter how much I study or work at it. So I'm a little concerned that some people, I'm just getting to know you. A lot of you are new. I'm a little concerned about the micromanaging. These folks know what they're doing and we've been very successful because I've been letting them do it. So that's my two minute speech.
I guess my two cents, my two cents is that I've been in this position before. The reality is in code enforcement, that once you issue a ticket for some medial violation that you can't get compliance for, the word is out that the city is enforcing this provision. And the second time you issue one for the same or similar violation, you get compliance and all you need to do on the third occasion is mention it and you get compliance in a timely fashion. So that's how it works in that business. So they're not going to be issuing a whole bunch of citations.
Travis.
Yeah, I agree. They know more about planning than the police chief knows more about. I totally agree. I appreciate the way they manage them, let them do their jobs. But I just keep hearing that it's not very common and it's not very often. None of the other cities that I've spoken to are doing this and it just seems, the optics just seem off to me. And I'm going to continue to research it and try to put my support behind it, but right now I'm just not there.
Yeah, I think we've talked about this enough. This was first reading, so thank you for all your time. Thoughts? And the next one is ordinance F waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with superior automotive group in an amount not to exceed $247,640 for the purchase of four 2024 Dodge Durango police pursuit vehicles for use by the police department and staff requests third and final reading. Any discussion or your mayor from chief again?
I just had one question. I know the fire department, they, you know, like with the ambulance and the fire trucks, they do refittings.
Yes.
And I'm not going to get off in the weeds here, but have you guys ever considered that's even a possibility or a plausible approach to the cars that we have in our fleet?
So my understanding, Chief Simmons, before I speak about this, their refitting is they're taking the box off and putting it on a new chassis with a new motor.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of a misnomer.
So I'm not sure how.
Grading it that way. My thought would be, I mean, like go like crate engine route or, you know, maybe a engine transmission block type thing.
I'd be happy to speak with our excuse department mechanics on that. But my guess is police cars are driven so hard. It's not, when they start failing, it's, you're having multiple failures.
Yeah, and I know there's a lot more to consider than just the engine, but I just, I didn't know if that's ever been a consideration.
Well, we can try to recycle. That's why I try to stick with certain models and certain frames. But unfortunately, the industry keeps changing on us, you know, on the vehicles they provide us. We try to do a stick with like Dodge Durango and then all the equipment, we can reuse that in other cars in the future if we stick with Dodge Durangos and they don't change it. But what the industry really likes to do is every few years, they tweak their models a little bit to where none of your stuff fits anymore. So we have trouble doing that. And we do try to recycle our equipment quite a bit. But I'm not sure if there's the equivalent to a refit for police vehicles.
Well, I mean, the only reason I didn't mention that is because just the way that the cost is escalating. I mean, it's not like just a $2,000 increase, you know, year by year. I mean, we're going by the tens and thousands annually. It almost seems like.
I don't disagree. Now, it remains to be seen, but talking to some of the people I know in the car business, they feel like it can't go up continually and it will start coming back down. Now, that remains to be seen. A lot of this started with COVID and the supply chain stuff. It never, it never came back down again. So it remains to be seen. But what we're trying to do is get more and more mileage out of our vehicles. The standard was turning over to 100,000 miles and that was pretty standard in the industry for as long as I've been a cop.
Yeah, and so because I know, you know, we consider suspension, engine transmission, you know, all the stuff. But that's, I just didn't know if that was even realistic.
And I can do a little more research on that. Not that I know of, but we just try to push our vehicles further with better oils and with our mechanics. We routinely now are getting 110 easy, if not 120, 125,000 out of a car. Even if like these cars are authorized, by the time I get them out in the field after I take deliveries a year. And so the current cars we have, they're maybe at 115 now. By the time I get them off the street, they're maybe at 130. And so we do get a lot of miles out of our cars, which save us money in the end. But that's a good question. I'd be happy to look into it.
Okay.
I was just curious. Thanks. Travis, I'm motionable spin roles. You move to the third final reading.
Second.
That was Travis and Larry Wilms. Motion to move the third and final roll call vote.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. All read and for a third and final time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with superior automotive group in an amount not to exceed $247,640 for the purchase of four 2024 Dodge Durango police pursuit vehicles for use by the police department. Zoom.
Move to approve.
Second. That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Hart. Roll call votes.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with superior automotive group in an amount not to exceed $46,575 for the purchase of one 2024 Chevrolet Intervers with police equipment for use by the police department. Staff request third and final reading. Yes, chief?
Any questions on this one?
Larry.
Just, this is a different platform than you use. I'm assuming it would be for a different area of the department.
Yes, this will be perceived from one of my detectives. It's Chevy Intervers. It's not going to be a patrol vehicle. And we've used this platform in the past and it's a good platform for what they do. Again, it's not on the state budget sheet, so of course not much is on the state budget sheet anymore. And so that's why we're asking for a bid waiver on this vehicle.
Motion to move to final. Motion to move to third and final.
Second.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes, that is Ms. Newport and Mr. Hart. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. All read and for a third and final time. Waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding and authorizing a contract with superior automotive group in an amount not to exceed $46,575 for the purchase of one 2024 Chevrolet Intervers with police equipment for use by the police department. Is the motion approved?
So move.
Second. That was Mr. Wilms and Mr. Hart.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Blue Guys IT with a total of $73,504.20 for the purchase of Total Security Solutions to enhance city cyber security efforts. Any discussion?
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Ms. Hughes. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution approving the mayor's appointment of John Adal and Rick Hand to positions on the Val Vista Board of Construction Appeals. These two gentlemen are already on board in their terms or are up in their will to serve again. Any discussion?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
That was Ms. Hughes and Ms. Newport. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hart?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution creating a fee for filing applications to the Board of Construction Appeals. This is the one about the construction appeals and there's a proposed amendment. Jay.
I'm sorry, remember the crowd. We have, I didn't mean on.
Jay.
Okay, your question was, I'm sorry.
It's creating a fee for filing applications to the Board of Construction Appeals.
I think this is Chief Sims' baby wig, so I would need to defer to him at this.
I'm making a motion to amend. I think I'll.
Let's hear it from Chief Sims first, but we'll get to that in a second.
Yeah, an amendment. I just want to go back and say that whenever we were looking at some documents and to appoint John Adal and Rick on the Board of Construction Appeals, we noticed that there was a fee back about seven years ago that was removed. All I was trying to do is put that fee back in place, folks. There's a fee for a reason. It got removed about seven years ago. And I just felt like that if there's a fee seven years ago, and it does take time and in effort to do this, and applications have fees to them, that the reinstated fee, that's all we're doing. It's not a new fee. It's just reinstated fee that was there seven years ago.
Well, my understanding is all the other things have fees, all the other things.
That's correct. They fall in line, I believe, is that right, about they fall in line with the same rate, right? $200 or so?
It's aligned with the board of zoning, that's the fee, which is $200.
That's correct.
All of our requests that are similar to that, such as appeals to Chapter 107, that's about 100 bucks. That is 100. And then appeals of the zoning codes, Chapter 200, or it's $200. So this would be appeals of 103 in building code.
So I was trying to be, be consistent. And Travis has given a best address of proposed possible amendment. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yes, and this is just, this was my way of compromising. I feel like a bad guy tonight. But nonetheless, this just says that if they apply for the appeal in the Board of Construction Appeals with a reason with them, that they get their fee refunded and it falls back on the original fee that they gave to the city.
So that's, you're making, you're making a motion to amend to the reading as presented on the document.
That's correct.
Mayor, that motion would require a second.
Is there a second?
Mayor lacking the second, then the motion would fail without a second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the original proposal? Anna.
Thank you. Chief Sims, I think you would also mention that in the past year, we didn't have any appeals to inform.
Since I've been on the construction bill, we have not had an appeal.
Right.
So it's been about a year and a half or so.
Yeah, that's just the one question I had is whenever we add additional fees to things, it can, is it necessary, since we don't seem to have many of these appeals happening? So that would just be a consideration is if we're not having appeals, do we need to have the fee?
It's not the same. I have an appeal. It's somewhere down in the future. Yeah, but right now we're very receiving.
Jay, you're for it?
Thank you. Just where do the fees go? Do they go directly to your budget, to your?
I'm assuming they go to general funding. Because I don't vote on that.
Yeah. Any more discussion?
Move to approve.
That was Mr. Wilms. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Newport. Roll call vote on the resolution to create the fee.
Councilmembers Hart?
No.
Hughes?
No.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
No.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Mayor, you may vote in favor if you so desire.
Okay, I'll vote in favor.
So it was passed four votes to three.
Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a fourth amended trail maintenance agreement with Val Vista Development Property Owners Association, Inc. Taylor, could you speak on this for a second?
Okay, nothing new to add from the work session, but just to summarize kind of what's going on.
going on here, for the budget of 2025, the council approved in December, we increased our soft service trail maintenance from seventy thousand a year to ninety thousand max, that is a maximum. Basically, the agreement is that the POA we partner with them to maintain the trails, so we agree to a certain amount, they agree to a certain amount. For 2024, it was seventy thousand each, giving a hundred and forty thousand total for our hundred and four miles worth of trails. Due to a decrease and a continued expectation of decrease, volunteer work, private investment in the maintenance portion of trails, the POA and the city is planning for that, to ensure that our trails are safe and accessible, are maintained well, and they're wonderful gift that was given for a public enjoyment, we need to increase our budget to make sure that they continue to stay safe and accessible throughout 2025. It's already in the budget, previous council approved it, and so we are proposing to make the maintenance agreement match the budget, so it's going from seventy thousand to ninety thousand max. Have to take any questions?
Larry?
My understanding is that there has been some volunteer maintenance of the trails historically, and that may be declining a little bit, is that...
The private oversight, that was the expectation, private investment in trail-related maintenance, volunteers, there's always been volunteers, I expect there always will be volunteers, just the investment portion of that from the private side is expected to decrease, so that is what the staff and POA is trying to cover, that decrease by that extra twenty thousand.
Have we used, have we seen a time when we've used or exceeded the amounts that we've approved in the past?
No. We cannot exceed, it's up to a certain amount, so we will hopefully never exceed that amount, that's the goal. But if it's like, for example, this is, again, Mr. Reader, it is a maximum, so if trail maintenance does go over this amount, which right now is ninety each, so a hundred and eighty totally, let's say, just throwing a number on the board, if the maintenance for two twenty twenty-five will be two hundred thousand, we would still only be liable for that, or we would only pay for ninety thousand, and that, we wouldn't be expecting to pay the other ten thousand. That would be covered by the private end.
So if it goes over the hundred and eighty thousand at the end of the year, and the idea is our share, if that goes over the ninety thousand for the city, you would come back to us and ask for an adjustment, or how?
No, this, the other entity would pay the over amount, we are only obligated to pay up to ninety thousand.
Who's the other entity?
The POA. That's who this maintenance agreement is with.
So are they the primary responsibility, or a secondary?
Correct, and we reimburse them fifty percent of trail maintenance costs every month.
So what we're trying to do is be proactively formal, proactively fair with them as well?
Proactively fair, continued, you know, teammates essentially on the shared effort for sure, yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Ms. Hughes, roll call vote.
It's Newport.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was Ms. Newport, for the second.
Councilmembers Hart?
Yes.
Hughes, yes. Newport, yes. Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into restated limited terminal license agreement with Villavista Village Property Owners Association Inc. for purposes of facilitating an addition to the public recreational trail system throughout the city. Did you want to say just a few words about this?
Sure, we kind of briefly talked about this at the work session during open discussion, this is essentially just a cleanup, a record cleanup, and to go with the maintenance agreement, what we are essentially, I guess, what we maintain is within this document, so our maintenance cost goes toward the licensed trails within the agreement here that you guys are considering. We did, I'm not sure if we talked about this at the work session, just to make sure and cover it, it is reinstating the portion that was previously already dedicated in 2015, we are re-upping that because these licensing agreements are only due for so many years, so this proposal for you tonight, instead of just having so many trails at different staggered amounts, to clean it all up and give it all one life, lifeline, or lifetime, so before we had some that were twenty-five years from 2015, you know, twenty-five years from 2017, twenty-five years from 2020, well, we are cleaning all that up, making one document, all the trails on this document will be licensed for twenty-five years instead of the city maintaining several different staggered over a hundred and four miles worth of trails, so essentially it's just one big record cleanup. That was probably a few too many words, I mean, I only asked for a few, but...
That's okay, so that's twenty-five years from 2025?
Twenty-two-five years from today, you approve.
That's a nice round number.
Yeah, twenty-fifty.
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Mr. Wilms and Ms. Isbell. Was there any more conversation? Travis?
Yeah, do we have any other financial shared, or shared financial agreements with the POA, like, do they help us with anything that's not recreational, like it's...
We have, over the last, Mayor, if I can, there are numerous agreements between the city and the POA regarding all kinds of things over the last twelve years, so about the trails itself, it's the license agreement, the maintenance agreement, that's it with the trails, we've had prior agreements with them on other things, so I can't remember what they all are right now.
But have they helped us out financially with, like, streets, or, you know?
No.
No, it's not.
Nothing with streets.
In my dealings with my family, being very cooperative when we're, you know, various things come up that we're working on, and it'd be really easy to work with, and it just means they say yes like nine times out of ten when I ask them for something.
It just seems like if we're helping them out with things recreational, and they have a larger budget than us, maybe it would be okay for us to ask them for help sometime when we need it, but...
Oh, yeah, there's different things that come up, but I guess I don't look at this so much as us, I always look at this more like a joint venture, you know, so much as us helping them out with their trails, you know, it's kind of a, in this case, I think a rising tide lifts all boats, but they don't like it.
I think something, something to say in favor of the POA, and I'm not necessarily a supporter of subsidizing their activities, I think they get a fair share of our money as residents of the community. What I do believe, though, is that, that there are times that we need to share things because we serve the same population, the reality is, is that we serve a greater population than they do, because we serve the whole city, everybody in it, all the property in it, and they only serve the property that's in the POA, that's not a hundred percent of the city property, and so we serve an additional component that the POA is not able to serve, cannot serve, by entering into this agreement, from my view anyway, it allows private property, POA property, owned by the POA members, the property owners of the POA, to share with the public access to POA property, and so all of those, all of those trails, for the most part, are within common property areas that are in the plats of the subdivisions created by the developers, so they are literally on private property, not on the city property, and so they are granting really an extension of public use for private land, and so for that reason, I think it's fair for us to share in those costs, we're serving the same population, we have opportunities for grants that they do not have, and so there are things that we have an opportunity for to help in a shared responsibility, in my humble opinion.
Did we get a motion on this yet?
Yes.
Motion.
Motion, second. Okay. I was going by your earlier suggestion, when you're making sure everybody got to discuss.
Thank you.
Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with VLP, an equipment share company pursuant to a Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Agreement for the purchase of one new case backhoe in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand dollars for use by the street department. Karen, could you say a couple words about this?
Hi, good afternoon. The street department is respectfully requesting the approval of a purchase of a new case backhoe for use for the street department in street maintenance and riding lane repair. This backhoe can be purchased using a Sourcewell Purchasing Agreement, and this has also been funded and supported the purchase through our capital funds, so it's already in the budget as well.
Any questions? Larry?
Is this an addition to our fleet of backhoes, or is this a replacement of...
This is an addition to our fleet.
So we need the additional equipment?
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion?
Move to approve.
Shay?
Karen, are you, Karen, would you have us move to third and final for this, or... Oh, I'm sorry. Because it was purchased through the Sourcewell, we won't have to do that a second.
Okay.
I'm new here.
All right. Motion to approve?
I think Larry motioned to...
Oh, okay, second?
Second.
That was Larry Wilms and Hannah Isbell. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Rigs Cat, a Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Agreement, for the purchase of one new cat, a color paving and compaction roller, in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents for use by the street department.
This one is very similar to the backhoe in that we're requesting approval for the purchase of the new roller, our intent is to use that to accompany our durahter in making street repairs, extend that longevity of those repairs, this piece can also be purchased under the Sourcewell Purchasing Cooperative, and it is within our capital budget for 2025, and just to let you know, Shay, I had my original paperwork sent for third and final as well.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
That was Travis Hart and Shay Newport. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution expressing support in participation of the city of Villavista in the federal advance effective accountable policing and criminal justice practices to enhance public trust and public safety program. Chief, if you could say a couple words about this would be great.
Sure, this is, this is a reference to the LSO program, which is long portion support office, I mentioned it last week, basically it's where we get surplus military equipment, government-type equipment that we get basically for free, all we have to do is spend the time and go pick it up and sometimes maintain it, and it's been very beneficial to the park and the city, I had added all up and put a price tag on it, I bet you we've saved the city by upwards of a million dollars in the last several years, so it's a very successful program, and it wasn't cost anything, it just requires now annually to get city officials involved, make sure they're knowledgeable of it, make sure they approve that we're using the program, and then we also have to advertise to the public, which we'll do so in the library and close it here at the police station, so the public is where we'll put on our social media as well.
Any questions?
Just want to say one thing, as I made a part of a question, federal regulations are changing quite rapidly here, especially the last week or so, and this program may change, or it may not be required anymore, or there are some things we're doing that may not have to do in the future, or something like that, you're not going to hurt anything by adopting this, we'll be ready to go, assuming it stays the same, if it goes back to the way it was before, and we didn't have to do that, then, you know, you haven't done anything by adopting this, so...
Yeah, no harm I found, appreciate that. Yeah. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Larry Wilms, second. Travis? Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution authorizing budgetary funding transfers between departments in the 2024 annual city budgets, and this is when we're within budget of one department, we may be a bit over, right now we believe that a fire department is going to be over, and the IT department may be a little bit over, but because we're using GAAP as first year now, we're really not quite sure where all departments know of, which is one of the reasons why we passed this, so...
Move to approve.
Second. Travis Hart. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Motion carried six to zero. Next one is a resolution designating authorized dispersing officers in municipal depository board for the city of Villavista for calendar year 2025, and pursuant to our conversation, I believe we have it set up so that the fourth signer is, well, John Flynn and Kim Hall are first signers, and then the mayor, Pro Tam, and then the city clerk, these are all if we need them, and then Chief James Graves, and then the fourth alternate would be Larry Wilms, and then on the municipal depository board, we have it set up for Larry Wilms to be the third member of that. Any discussion?
Motion to approve. Second.
That was Wendy Hughes and Shay Newport. Roll call vote.
Councilmembers Hart?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Newport?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Isbell?
Yes.
And Hansel?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried six to zero. Next, the council work session is five thirty PM on Tuesday, February eighteen, it's on Tuesday, and presidential holiday, and next, the council regular meeting, six PM on Monday, February twenty-four, planning commission work session, four thirty PM on Thursday, January thirty, planning commission regular meeting, four thirty PM, or immediately following the BCA on Monday, February ten, and these are all Villavista District Court, Boarding of Construction Appeals, three PM Tuesday, February eleventh, if necessary, at fire station number four, conference room sixteen thirty-nine, Ford Stills Boulevard, and Larry, did you have something?
I did, it may appear to the audience that our clerk is picking on Travis Hart, our newest council member, one of our new council members, by calling on him first to vote. In the past years that she's been a clerk, she's been round robin, so she has a list of all six names, and she would pick one with every, with every action, and so it might be a different one every time, so to make it easier in her record keeping, she has endeavored to choose one of us to start and follow through with that whole meeting, with that same person being the lead, next time it might be Ms. Hughes, or Ms. Freeman, or myself, or Ms. Isbell, or Mr. Hansel, so, I don't know how she'll make up that thing, but maybe she draws straws.
No, we're going to go right in order, next time it'll be Ms. Hughes, the next month Shay Newport, and we'll keep going down the line, so... month, Shay Newport, and we'll keep going down the line, so. Okay, with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your attention.